And if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, can I have roll call, please?
Councillor Gensher.
Here.
Councillor Gates.
Here.
Councillor Hughes.
Here.
Councillor Littkey.
Here.
Councillor Struble.
Here.
Councillor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Dring.
Here, thank you very much, Sadie. We are now at the first citizen and community group comment. And I have two in front of me, so I will start off with John. You didn't give me a last name there. You know, three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm John from Kellensocks. A few of you guys already recognize me. I want to say thank you to the community first for the big support we have from you guys, from everyone. So I have a question. I represent my, my friends and little part we have. And then the question says about the chambers of commerce. Chambers commerce. We stopped being, we stopped being members this year's from them. So since we have, we stopped being members from them. So we, we have a an event, we have events in our location. So we have enough perception, the members of commerce is part of the city hall. Because since we know, we're not members of them, we have a customers comes to us and then try to tell us the members, they come into members, they want to do parties with us or events with us. And the members try to direct, to direct them to somebody who's member with them instead of with us. So I believe we know, we know fairly represented, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So my question, our question is that if a member of commerce is part of the city hall.
Well, you know, I can honestly tell you that the chamber is not under the city's guise, but the chamber does work out of City Hall. They have an office here, but they would be the ones you need to talk to about how they promote their members and, and such. But the city is very on board with what you guys do and your whole group over there. You're doing a great job and your food carts, wonderful food. I've eaten there many times, I think everybody has. And we appreciate everything you do. And if you need me to, I would be glad to sit in with the chamber and maybe go over some things with you and the chamber, if that would help you.
Yeah, everybody, we, we pay them, right? And then we pay whatever who's member with them, we pay. But as soon as we start paying, we feel like we missed, missed trade it, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You betcha, thank you. All right, next on my. Yeah, go ahead.
This isn't the first time I've heard this come up before, is that people are confused that the Chamber of Commerce is part of the city. And I think we need to do a better job of trying to segregate that too, because the chamber is a nonprofit in the city, but they are not part of the city. And people have seen, I guess people have seen things where they've called the chamber for permits and stuff to do stuff. And they find out, oh, the chamber is not part of the city. They've called me about it before. So it's not the first time I've heard it. So I think it's something we need to look at is identifying that the chamber is not part of the city. And maybe one of the problems is that they're in this building. I mean, neither nonprofits in this building, why is a chamber in the building? And it's obviously causing confusion. So it's something we might need to look at, because when our own business members in our community don't know, the Chamber of Commerce is not a government entity and not part of the city, we had a separate entity, that's an issue. So maybe something we can look at having a discussion about.
We'll put that on a later date after we kind of go through this and get some information.
And yes, and I'm actually meeting with Christina from the chamber and with Brett, the chamber president later this week. And so it's questions I can pose to them. And because the city does partner with them on tourism support, because the city doesn't, we, they were handling that portion, which is fairly common for a city and chamber to, I think, as far as I know, at least it's fairly common for them to kind of have a partnership in a certain way. But I will, I can ask about this situation. Yeah, make it more clear that they're not part of the city. They're just, they're a partner with the city on tourism.
Definitely be more interested to see how that partnership is, is arranged and organized, you know? If there's money exchanged, do they go off a bid? Or do we just do it, things like that, like to have questions to that? So we could definitely get that up.
We can put something together and we'll get back at it later. And we thank you, John, for bringing that to us. Okay, next on my list, I have Brandy Littkey. We have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Mine's free. Hi, we have, oh, there it is. We have a street light that's been out for about two months now on our street. And we only have two streetlights on our street, so it's very dark, it's very dangerous. Our neighbors have called, I think, three or four times to PGE and they haven't heard back. So they just asked me to mention it tonight. If we could get some push on that, or if there's something we can do, that would be awesome. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Oh. I have used PGE's outage form many times.
Yeah.
To report streetlights in the area, and I found them responsive. So I don't know if you've gone in through their website or not, but they.
I, I know that the two neighbors that have reached out to me both have done that, and they've made phone calls. So I don't know if it just takes time or what, but.
They generally respond straight to whoever submits it as well, too.
Yeah.
I would get an email within a day or so acknowledging that and then a follow up too. So I would encourage them to continue to try, but whatever we can do from the city, we look into that too.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, we are now at the consent agenda. I have no more forms, so maybe you'd like to get one in before the second reading, feel free. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out or change or put back on there or anything? Is everybody comfortable with it? Okay. Can I get a motion in the room?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right, next on our list, we have department and committee reports. So I have the sheriff's department on there. I think you've all had a chance to read over all that. I know there was some talk about car theft and stuff like that. I don't know if all of you saw the email on that. I kind of wanted a little bit more information on that. I don't know if you've talked with him on that.
I did, I did speak with Lieutenant Mendoza this afternoon, and he apologizes for not being here. He had something that popped up at the last minute. So he is still really wanting to come and meet you in person and speak with you. There, he did send you the information that he, it's just, it was a kind of a overview of what the situation was with car theft. And there's, I kind of wanted to go over with you tonight, the, the, it's called the worksheet, not a worksheet, but it's on the website, the dashboard. Yes, they have a dashboard. And actually, he even encourages deputies to look at that, because you can see over time, if there's like a particular neighborhood that is having an issue. So I just kind of wanted to show everybody where that's at, if we want to share our screen, so everybody online could see it also. There we go. So if you go to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website, and then you scroll down, Sadie's going to do that, can everybody, I guess we wouldn't know that, Justin, can you see that? Let's be able to. So you scroll down and then there in that we call activity dashboards. We go to the dashboard. And up, actually, that kind of tells you some definitions and a little bit about it. But up at the top of the screen, yep, if you click on City of Estacada, right now, all there is is call activity. And that's what's showing up, they're still building this out, and there will be more information coming. So you can see for this particular year, the different types of callouts that happened, whether they were public initiated, whether they were deputy initiated. You can, you click on that, Sadie, the deputy initiated, it'll change it, change the numbers over. Do they change? Yes. Yeah, and so, and then you can click on, you click on the number, that's beside, for instance, let's go down to suspicious activity. Because it's click on that number and see if that, I'm not very good at this yet, I haven't played with it very much, but he was walking me through it today, and I think it's really helpful. It's that one, is it changing? No, maybe not, click on a small one, so we can tell, like a parking disorder, or we, yeah, like that one, see if it just pops up. No, okay, I want to have to get better at this. Maybe it's that. Oh, there we go. Yep, so maybe click on, yeah, parking disorders or suspicious activity. Yeah, and so you can see where they were called out to and it's, I don't know, you can kind of play with it, then what do you do with this data, right? You have all, we have this data at our fingertips. And so that's one thing that we were talking about today. There's some things you kind of want to look at, if you want to compare year over year. In the past couple of years, we've had the pandemic that has had an effect on the law enforcement activity. We've also had law enforcement laws changed. And so things that they can pull, like pull a driver over for are different now than they used to be. And then we've also had 224 closed for coming on two years, I mean, over a year and a half. And so maybe not as much traffic driving through. So there's some variables, so we're looking at like raw data here, and then what do you do with that? So I think that's what he'll keep working on and come and speak to you more next time about the, his ideas with that. And but it is something that the community has access to, that you have access to, and the deputies can also use, so.
I do, because I find this fascinating. Is there a way to figure out real time calls or calls that are happening in real time? Or is there any plans to do that in the future? Because I'll tell you that Pulse Point app with the fire department, and when I hear a fire truck going off, I've got questions. Well, I have those same questions when I hear a police car going off, and it would be kind of cool to think that I could pull up an app like.
We need a little scanner, you say where they're.
Right? Yeah, I should have one on all the time in my kitchen.
I can ask, yeah, I can ask about that, about real time data. Although I don't know, like, I don't know how risky that is for, you know, they're saying where they're going to a call. I don't know if they can say that or not. Anyway, but I'll ask Lieutenant Mendoza about that, though, so.
Just curious.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, one I could think of about 100 ways criminals could use that.
Yeah.
Themselves, but.
Well, they're all going here.
I just want to point out in the report this round, it looks like we had a much higher jump in thefts. So something for the community to keep in mind, there's a lot of thefts going on right now. Lock your stuff up, don't leave your keys in your car, don't leave valuables in your car, things like that. And it looks like from what I'm, what they gave us on these, a lot of the theft calls were kind of up and down the, the main 224 highway they're clustered. They're clustered a little bit in downtown area. And then it looks like out in the Campanella area, that's, that's where the main cluster is. So if you guys are in that area, you know, make sure you call things suspicious in and, you know, lock the doors, I guess.
That's a good point to call it in. If it's not something that, like in 911 emergency, you can call the non-emergency number and just call it in and a deputy can roll through, check things out. And then we can probably put that down. I lost my train of thought, but also, that was a very good point about lock your cars. Like a couple of those thefts, there was keys in the ignition or the car was running or, which is, that's disturbing to think about. I don't like to think about it, but just, it's a good idea to lock your, lock your cars and, yeah.
And then I, too, if we could emphasize the fact that we do have the new officers on that we agreed to, am I right?
Yes.
So the hours have increased.
Yes, we have increased hours.
We've got officers on the ground, and just so you know, we've put the time in.
Yep.
To make sure that we could, you know, slow the crime down as best we can.
And if the, if the budget is approved, in the budget for next year is planning ahead to bring on another deputy, so.
Good, good. All right, thank you on that. Next up, we have the committee commission and Lee's own reports. Have any of you met with your groups? Want to report on that? No? Okay.
Jerry.
Thanks.
Good job, Jerry. All right, so we're at the city managers' report.
Oh.
Do you have anything you want to report on?
Oh, no, we didn't have a quorum today at the DEIC meeting, so nothing.
So go ahead, Melanie.
Okay, nobody else had no other reports? Okay. I just wanted to share just briefly that, to remind everybody, the budget committee meeting is tomorrow. We'll start at 6:30 with urban renewal and then seven o'clock with the city budget. And it's open meeting, anybody is welcome, it'll be on Zoom as well. And then I just wanted to also share the WhatsApp event that we had was well attended, we had a lot of fun. There was quite a few people that came and were able to ask questions, it's very informal. And so we're planning our next one. I think it will be in August. And just, it was fun to interact with the community, be able to receive ideas, share ideas or plans, answer questions. And then we had the listening session, which you will be getting a summary of if you haven't already, can't remember if that went out yet. But that was, it was good. And then Elena and I began outreach to the stakeholders on Main Street, because we've done kind of a general request for ideas about the design of Main Street, when we redo that next year and repave and put new sidewalks. And there's some, a variety of design elements that could be included or not. And so we, she and I walked Main Street and dropped off flyers specifically to the people that will be most impacted by that. And we're holding on Wednesday, we're going to meet with them, anybody who wants to come over and just ask questions, so we can really get connected with the people who will be most impacted during construction and by the final design. So we're working on that. And that's all I have right now.
Well, thank you. All right, we are at council business, and first on my list is the Comcast franchise discussion. So if we could have you come up to the mic and kind of.
Yes, I would like to introduce, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest, being that my wife works for a company that is owned by the same people that own Reliance Connects. Okay. So a potential conflict of interest.
Yeah, and I'll do the same.
All right.
As I work for a company that has similar ownership.
All right.
And I checked with the, the Government Ethics Commission about the potential conflict. And so with a potential conflict, just for the record, that means that they can still participate in the discussion on the vote, but they just need to declare that and what the nature of that is with the potential conflict. So, all right, so I'd like to introduce Tim Goodman. He is the Senior Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs with Comcast Cable. And he approached the city, I think last year, we've been a little slow, about obtaining a franchise agreement to provide broadband service in Estacada. And so tonight, he has his team with him, they're going to make a presentation and allow you some time to ask questions. And then you can either ponder it and bring it back next meeting, if you want to do that. And we'll talk about it again, or you, if it's a clear cut yes or no, do you want to direct staff to work with Comcast to put together a franchise agreement? You can do, you know, you can say yes or no, or you could say, wait, we need to think about this. So I will turn it over to Tim to introduce his team.
Thanks, Melanie, appreciate the nice words. Good evening, Mayor Dring and members of the council, Tim Goodman. I'm the Senior Director of Government Regulatory Affairs for Comcast NBC Universal. I work, and the other folks that are my colleagues that are with me tonight, I'll work for the Oregon Southwest Washington region, which is based in Tigard. This region essentially stretches from Eugene Springfield to the south at the I-5 corridor up to about halfway, be just past Castle Rock Longview on the I-5 corridor. We go out east on 84 to Troutdale. We go up Highway 30 up to Rainier, where you go down, down to Scappus, go out to Corvallis, we're kind of all over in this area. So pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you so much for the invite. I would like to express my appreciation to Melanie and staff. They've been incredible to work with, very professional and, and upfront about a potential franchise with Comcast. Couple, just a quick little note about Comcast. Comcast is a parent company based out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, started in Tupelo, Mississippi. A family business, is still somewhat of a family. A lot of the folks here that, you know, the folks that are here with me tonight are like a brother and sisters to me. And through, you know, we all band together, we're a huge company, the largest entertainment and media company in the world, with holdings over in Europe and so on, but we're family. Ricky Wright, who handles our marketing for Comcast Business, is actually, her family moved out to Estacada a few years ago and raising the family out here. And so she's a big proponent of getting our servers out here, obviously. So, so there is some, so there are some employees out here and families that work for Comcast and make Estacada their home. Um, so Mark Nugent is here tonight. He handles our business development team. And so they had identified Estacada as a potential site to build out. One of the things we look at is we look at speeds that are available for broadband and so on. And, and so where we're going to build out, I've been with the company for about 11, almost 11 years now. This build out process typically just started a couple of years ago. We just built out the city of Hubbard. We are currently building out the entirety of the city of Woodburn. We have a new franchise agreement with the city of Silverton, so we'll be building out there, they're next in line once we're, we're done with Woodburn. We've identified some other areas, Eagle Creek and just next door here, unincorporated Wash, Clackamas County, excuse me, as well as Estacada, and then some other locations throughout what we call our region. So, so tonight, I brought my colleagues with me, and I, and I handle the government regulatory affairs. So I deal, I negotiate the franchise agreements. I was in Wilsonville negotiating a franchise renewal before I came here. And so I handled those relationships on the local level, county and counties and cities. So, so tonight, I have Mark Nugent with me, he's a part of our executive leadership team here in the region. He handles the business development, it was his team that identified Estacada as a potential build. I then have Hillary Lamont, who's our Senior Director for Xfinity Sales and Marketing. She's going to talk about what we have to offer for residents in the way of cable TV and broadband, Xfinity Mobile, our Xfinity Home Services, we've got a whole suite of services that we, we will be bringing to the city. And every resident would be available, every product and service would be available to every resident, if it's across the board. So our 1.2 gig speeds, every home that we build by would be able to get that. So then Ricky Wright, the, the local girl, who's the director of our marketing for Comcast Business, she's going to talk a little bit about what we offer for small, medium and large businesses. And then Rebecca Brown is here, and she's the Senior Director of Community Investment. And as I mentioned earlier, we're kind of like a family, and we don't just bring products and services to a city. We bring a lot with us, with our partnerships with schools and nonprofits and, you know, and even with the cities themselves, where we may sponsor a concert in the park or a movie in the park, or whatever may be after school recreation programs. Digital literacy is a big part of what we do, our Internet Essentials, which Rebecca will talk a little bit about, is our program for pretty much anybody who's receiving any type of aid, whether it's a, a, through WIC program or through our veterans or seniors and those types of things, where we have a broadband program available. It's $10 a month, it's been that way for, since it started 11 years. The only thing that's, that's changed on that is broadband speeds have gone up and the availability is, there's more eligible families and individuals. And so Rebecca will talk a little bit about that. So Mark is first up, and again, Mark is our Senior Director for Business Development. He's going to talk a little bit about what a build out might look like and, and how we use things, how we use poles when we go underground and those kinds of things. And we know those are important to the city. And so I'll turn it over to Mark and then he can, we'll talk a little bit about that. And then Hillary will come up and talk about our residential services.
Do you want us to start the PowerPoint or?
Oh, you can probably start in a second. Probably just go based on notes. Thank you very much, Tim. That was an amazing introduction, and I hope I don't hit you guys down here. Thank you, Mayor, Council for allowing us to speak with you today. As Tim mentioned, I'm in charge of business development. I, unlike Tim, he's been here for several years at Comcast. I'm probably the newest member of the team. I started here in the region less than two years ago, I started a year and a half ago. And not only is it a beautiful state, a beautiful part of the state, but shortly after I started here, and my role is to look for or help Comcast decide where we invest our funds. It's, it's not easy to build out networks like this, I'm sure you, you know, you've seen it. You, you can see the benefits of it, it's not easy. And I get a chance to look at the region and I get a chance to see where is, where is the best place for us to invest. And really, really early on, I identified this community. And I was really excited about it. I took a couple of trips out here, maybe you saw me walking around, maybe you saw me grabbing a beer or some tacos. Maybe you saw me walking around through some of these neighborhoods. It's an amazing community, and it's something that I felt strongly was a place that we should invest, not only our money, but our people, our families that we have here at Comcast. And there's so much more that you learn about what we do here. So that's the first thing I'll mention, it's, it's not easy, it's not cheap, but it's something that we strongly believe is worth it. And it's our resources that we're going to put in here to work alongside the community and be here for a while. So how does it typically work? I think Tim asked me to talk about how these, these build outs typically work. We won't do anything, don't, don't worry, we won't do anything until you tell us it's okay. So I think the first step is we have hopefully discussions on the franchise agreement. And once that's done, you might see, how long does it take? It's not an overnight process. It might take a year, 12 to 18 months before this is completely built out. However, it might happen in phases. So some people might actually see work being done before others. And eventually, once everything is done after those 18 months, everybody will have a chance to participate in our services. They'll have a chance to benefit from the network. And again, can't wait to hear what you have to say about it. There have been some, some discussions or conversations about, is this overhead? And by overhead, I mean, do you see our network on poles or cables and poles? Or is it underground? And what we, we like to do, and it drives the level of investment to the point where, yes, it does make sense for us if we can balance the overhead with the underground. So our plan isn't to go somewhere where there is no underground, or sorry, there's no overhead, and then put things overhead. We want to keep whatever is underground, underground, so you won't see anything there. In those locations where there are overhead, what we call plants, or if you see overhead cables, we like to be able to leverage, leverage that. That allows the investment to, to remain, to remain reasonable for us, so we can continue. I think Tim has, and others, and myself have observed a lot of this new growth. I think anything that you see that's new growth will be underground, you won't see anything above ground, you won't even notice that we're there. And so between the investment it takes, the amount of time, the underground, over, underground, above ground mix, I think we'll be really excited if we can to be able to make that investment here and do it in a reasonable amount of time. And I believe, Tim, unless you had anything that you'd like to add, I'd like to turn it over to Hillary.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Will you guys be deciding to put your head in unit locally, or are you guys going to be taking that somewhere outside the city?
Sorry, what was it?
Your head in unit for, are you going to put it locally, or are you going to be?
Ah, yes, so we will, we will need a head end, and that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll need to, to, to build a head end. We'll have to locate the land, and we're, we're hoping to be able to do it here in Estacada. And I think we're trying to identify properties that will allow us to do it. And if it can't be done here in the city, we'll also continue to look, maybe in some of the unincorporated areas over. Our preference is to do it here, close to the city.
Okay.
Good question.
Yep, I have an next question for you. When you're putting your plant in, are you going to be looking at just Estacada proper, or are you looking at the general area as well? I know you mentioned that Eagle Creek, but, you know, heading up the 224, heading out to 11, that area. So you guys are going to be, you guys are going to be looking at that, that's the outside of our proper as well, you're doing as well?
Yeah, so for the Estacada part of our build, it will be mostly within the city limits. There could be opportunities to go out, outside of city limits in Estacada. But we're building, we're coming down from the north, so it'll also branch all the way up through Eagle Creek. So that's will be the majority of the unincorporated areas, and then some around Estacada proper. And then some around Estacada proper.
I have one more, another question. Um how would you guys plan to establish your plant in areas like multifamily housing? Um to establish and bring something beyond like simple like BDSL or something to them, like maybe fiber or stronger broadband or something?
Good question. Man, you have some really good questions. So for for multifamily properties, uh they're not typically. Each units of a multifamily property isn't covered by the overall franchise agreement, so it'll be on us. And our team will go to the owners of those properties and negotiate a right of entry. And so we'll negotiate agreements with them so that we can then serve all the units of a multifamily property. And that will include uh maybe an apartment building, uh probably a mobile home park, uh those types of of facilities.
Okay. Uh last, last question there. For your, for your last mile to the to the homes, are you gonna be doing planning for underground? And are, you know, or and how we kind of solve route conflicts with existing providers now?
Yeah, so everything that we'll do will be done by permission either of the city of the property that we're we're working with. So we won't, uh we will, we will also, we will work with residents as well as businesses. So uh a business, for example, we might have to have an access agreement with them if they have a larger property. If it is something where our plant or our network is right up against that business, it might be done by a drop. It'll be a little bit easier, but if we're doing anything that requires any major work, we'll have to get permission from those businesses. Uh for homes, uh the franchise agreement typically covers how far we're able to get up to those homes. For for apartment buildings, we'll negotiate with that property specifically. Does that answer the question?
Uh yeah, I think I got it together. One last question for our.
You've got really good questions.
The uh, so I know that the Comcast has a history like in downtown locations to provide wireless coverage for downtown areas. Do you guys have plans to do that here in Estacada?
Uh sorry, you're talking about mobile phones?
Uh no, not mobile phones, like.
Hotspots?
Yeah, basically hotspot location. I know like in Portland, there's lots of those and you guys have them in smaller towns. I mean, as you guys will cover the downtown. I've seen it both where it seems to you guys have provided free to the city sometimes and sometimes you guys provide it where it's just there. And then if you guys are the Comcast customers, they can connect to it.
Yeah, so there is a variety of services that we provide. That's included, so I think you're you're very well informed there. Uh we have, I'm I'm not sure if that's negotiated specifically in front of your. Okay.
No, sorry, I have lots of.
Yeah, the the Wi-Fi units come as part of the system, you know, and and for multiple reasons. For one, accessing the broadband and internet services, also our Xfinity Mobile that provides that a boost as well. But that is not something that, you know, where you have to ask for anything like, we'll automatically do that. So and we size that typically for the community. So and then one, I'll respond also to one other question you asked about the areas right around Estacada. Just so you know, I I finished a negotiated agreement, uh renewal with Clackamas County back in August. And then just went in and we reached an agreement uh within the last thirty days for to expand the sphere of where we can provide services. So we can provide service to anything right adjacent to it. So we've already got that roadblock out of the way. In case there are some build outs that that happen or that's outside the city, we'll we'll be able to potentially reach those businesses or residences as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all you got?
No, it's good.
Next time I'll schedule two separate meetings, one for him, one for us.
Absolutely.
All right, Sadie, you can go to like slide three if that works, if that's okay. And then Hillary can can. So so Hillary Lamont, again, is our senior director for uh sales and marketing for what we call our Xfinity, which is our residential services. And she's gonna give you kind of an overview of what we provide on that, those services.
Sure, great. And I need slides and notes to stop me so I don't go too crazy telling you everything we can do. I'm just gonna try to stick to the really important stuff. So um one thing that was spoken about is we have a whole suite of products. If we are here in Estacada, all of those products would be available to our residential customers. So I wanted to give you some highlights of each of those products. I I won't hit everything here, but certainly if there's questions, we can come back. So Tim did already explain that we would bring our high speed internet to every household that we would pass. So those speeds range anywhere from fifty megabits per second to one point two gigs. So it just depends on what each customer needs. Um a couple of other things that I wanted to point out is we do include some advanced security to help protect everything on your network. That is part of our service. So I know there's things that you can get maybe on each device, but this is going to protect all the things on your network. So you don't, I I don't know if you guys have heard stories about cameras getting hacked and thermostats getting hacked. We have that security built in to help you alert when something's happening and protect your whole network. That is included. Um a couple of other things I'm really excited about is we have a lot of controls. So um this is one of my favorite features of our internet. We're not just a dumb pipe of data. We're here to help you control it in your home. And so you do have visibility to devices on your network, what you want on, what you don't want on. And my favorite is that you can assign devices to people. So for example, my twelve year old has his own little profile and I can choose when he's on, when he's off, put parental controls on, pause all his devices. Um you can do a lot of different things and that's just an example of our advanced um controls. And then, of course, we do have gateways for lease. Customers can purchase their own as well. Some of our packages do include these Wi-Fi gateways, which is really, really nice when you have our lease. Because as our network upgrades, you can upgrade. If there's a problem, we're going to replace it. It's not this huge equipment outlay over and over and over to keep up with the technology. There's a lot more I could go into on internet, but it's it's a very big part of our product. It's our backbone. Additionally, one product is very new that I'm very excited about is our Xfinity Mobile. Um our Xfinity Mobile is available to any internet customer and includes unlimited talk, text and data. And there's no contract and there's no line fees. So if you sign up for a mobile, the price is the price. There's no extra things other than maybe like your nine one one charges and stuff like that. It does use the most reliable nationwide five G network. If you wanna guess which one that is, it starts with a V. And we do have a great partnership with them and it saves a lot of money. So um currently, most customers save four hundred plus dollars a year. It is a big advantage to being an internet customer. There we go. So I personally um save about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a year versus what I was paying to a big wireless provider in the past. In addition, there's customers who still like a home phone. There might be some here. I actually have one too. And um we do have advanced voice. It's very inexpensive. It has a lot of features. But what I'll point out is it does have nationwide calling and several international um calling packages available as well included. So that's my first set. And if we go to the next set and then I can go back for questions. I'm really excited about our video product. So that's what we're known for. We're Comcast. That's what we started in Tupelo was our video product. It's still very relevant. I know a lot of people stream. A lot of people have our cable service and stream. We have something for everyone. So um we do have HD. There's multiple programs. You can go from, you know, just your local channels all the way up to. What I have in my video addicted household, which is every single premium channel. And you had our voice remote, which you've probably heard about it, seen it. Maybe you've used it at a friend's house. It's really, really a cool way to interact with our system and it actually controls many of the features. Um but if you don't want to sign up for our cable service, we also offer a streaming box. It's at no additional charge for anyone who has our internet and it still has that cool voice remote. We do have agreements with almost every single streaming partner. So um I listed a few here. There's probably a hundred more you might never have heard of in your whole entire life. But if you're searching for something, you'll be able to find it across the platforms, which is really awesome. And then um I know another thing a lot of people care about are sports. Maybe you like the Blazers, maybe you like the Timbers, maybe there's some other franchises around. We do have agreements with those networks. We have some great accessibility features for people who have different needs and abilities. And we have a lot of multicultural packages as well. So lots and lots of video options, really something for everyone. And last but not least, we do have a home product. There's two options here. One is managed security. So you do have that monitored security. We do work with all the police departments. It is a, we were just looking at the the sheriff's report here. Maybe you're worried and you want to have some security tied in. That is available. There's also a self um monitored option as well. A lot of people just want a doorbell camera or a camera on their garage. They don't feel like they need to have a monitored security option and there's a self serve security option as well. I know I just blew through a lot really fast. If you guys gave me two hours, I could fill it all up, but I will stop here and see if there's any questions.
Oh, Joel, surprise.
Yes, he's the expert.
Yeah, sorry. Uh my question has to be more around your marketing plan. Um how do you plan to market to their, are your end users out here? Is it gonna be like door knocking campaigns? Are you gonna do commercialing? Like basically, what should our residents expect from Comcast for them? Try to sell to them?
Sure, yes. Well, all of those things. So um you know, before we come, we'll we'll do some maybe door hanging, possible um direct mail. Just to say, hey, your address is ready. As Mark talked about, we may not have everything ready at once. So we'll try to do some advanced campaigns as well as we're here campaigns that are um direct to that home. In addition, one thing that I'm really excited about, and we've taken this to Hubbard and to Woodburn, and it's the same tactic that we would use here, just to drive awareness. Is we do a lot of local partnerships. So um community events, if people are gathering and it's an opportunity for us to be a sponsor. It's an opportunity for us to come out and speak with people and inform them about what we have and where it's available. We wanna be there and we'll put some dollars there too. Um the other thing that I'm really excited about, and I know we heard from a small business owner, is we do a lot of what we call pick up the tab. So we work together with local businesses. We will um pay for everybody's lunch maybe for a day, as long as they'll come talk to us. And then um cross promote that as well. And then in addition, you guys do get some of our regular media out here because you're part of that Portland DMA. Um but if there is local print, if there's any other ideas, we'd actually be really curious to hear from the city what you recommend. And we're we're down for anything. I mean, I've sponsored Bunko Night. I've sponsored, you know, Fiesta Mexicana in Woodburn. Like, nothing's too small and nothing's too big.
Uh next question is your price points.
Yeah. So that's a complicated question. Because we have our everyday pricing, which is no promotions at all, and then we always have promotions going on. So um if you took our everyday pricing as it is today, no offers whatsoever, our internet would start at about fifty dollars. However, and I'll I'll share maybe our most recent option is um right now for new customers, we have an offer. It's a two year price guarantee, no contract, unlimited internet, and it comes with the wireless gateway for free for two years. Um and you get a line of our mobile and it's seventy-five bucks. So there's um lots of offers that happen and change by the time we're here. It could be that offer. It could be a different offer. And then um we do have several different speeds and several different packages. So so much is customizable to what each customer would want.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
Actually, I actually have a question.
Dustin?
Sorry, Paul. Uh you said there was that two year plan or whatever. You said that there was no limit. Is there typically a limit to the amount of data used with Comcast?
That also depends. So um on our current, like everyday pricing, there is a one terabyte limit. If the customer goes over a terabyte, it's fifty dollars to go over. Uh we do have a couple of options. There's an unlimited option where you get our gateway and unlimited data for twenty-five dollars that you can add on to any package. Or like I was mentioning, we do have some different promotions going at times that do include that unlimited data.
Did that answer your question, Dustin?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Do you anticipate having a local presence at all? And if if so, great. If not, where would the closest uh shop be or office?
That's a great question. Um we'll see. It would, it kind of depends on these build outs that Mark and Tim are talking about. We're always evaluating our distribution. Currently, our closest location is Clackamas Town Center. And it is a full fledged retail store where customers can come in to buy, but customers can come in for help, whether it's with your bill, your equipment. You can come in, meet someone face to face, even make an appointment, so you don't have to wait.
Any other questions? All right, we thank you very much.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks. Uh Ricky Wright, uh resident of Estacada. She's our uh director of uh marketing for Comcast Business.
Hi, everyone. So he keeps on saying that I'm the local person in Estacada, so I just want to say something real quick about that. Um and I'm going completely off script for all of you. So um Joel, I got very emotional when I saw you. You don't know me, but I know you very well and your family. Um we moved here about four years ago. Um and we were evacuated from our home, as many of us were during the fires. You, and I'm getting, you were our source of truth. You were an advocate for the community. Um you and the community joined forces together and made my husband and I and our four children. Um believe that we had a community, even if we didn't have our house, even if we didn't have anything left. Um we were fortunate and some of our community members weren't. Um but we, as a resident, myself and my husband, wanna get back to the community. Um I'm very hopeful we'll build over to two eleven, cause that's where I am. So I'm right off of two eleven, my husband and I, um and our family. Um we have other friends who are up the hill a little bit. Um and I just wanna say, I'm not just a resident. Um I've I've been a resident of many places. Um this is our home. Um this is our community. And so I want, wanted to come up to you before. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but um this means a lot to to me personally, to be in front of all of you. So uh thank you for the time. Um so, sorry for going off script for a second. Um back to why we're here. So um I am the marketing director for Comcast Business. Um we, uh and there's a slide, we have a a breadth of infrastructure across the nation. Um we have very diverse networks. Um that goes to building access, to access points, to. Um you know, a breadth of different ways that we can deliver service to different areas. Um as you you can see, we've doubled our network capacity in the last twenty-four months and we're gonna continue to look at what that looks like. All of what we do is based on business need. And so it's not a cookie cut approach to what businesses need. Um there are many different levels of what businesses need from a solution perspective. And so we have very much an à la carte type service, but then we also have bundles as well depending upon. Um we have fiber, fiber and coaxial um delivery uh in ways that we can support businesses. So we'll go through what small business looks like, what fiber looks like versus um some of the other packages that we have. And a lot of what we do obviously is monitor from a network perspective twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Um we obviously wanna make sure that the businesses stay um and have the most reliable service so that there's no downtime. So you'll see, we have some backup solutions to that as well. So like we were talking about, there is a breadth of what we have to offer on the business side as well. There is a a ton of infrastructure across the nation, but we are a local community. And I will talk towards some of our investments in the local uh marketing side as well. So on the the next slide, we'll go through some of our products in our portfolio. And it ranges again from small business to to mid-market sized, larger budget businesses. Um we have our standard Comcast business internet. Um so right now, and I say right now because we are in a the short uh timeframe going to increase our speeds. So those range from thirty-five megs um to our gigabit speeds on the the small business side. Um they are part of a bundled package if we want to, uh the business wants to to be part of that bundle with security edge. So I'm gonna bounce around. So we are confident that, and we we very much want all businesses to take security edge with their internets. We wanna mitigate against any cyber attacks, any risk. And so you'll see in all of our conversations, there doesn't, there is nothing that that talks about internet. This doesn't talk about security too, and that's on the mid-market side as well. But in addition to that's the reliability piece and understanding who's utilizing your your Wi-Fi solutions. And so we have a couple of different services that I'll highlight, not all of them. Um so Connection Pro. So say in an unfortunate situation, your business does go down from an internet perspective. Connection Pro is an LTE backup, cellular backup to your your business. Um it it's a reliable source. It allows you to keep it up and running again and make sure that you're handling your customers, your employees are up and running. As whatever issue is fixed on the on the backend. So we have Connection Pro and that's part of some of our bundles as well. If Connection Pro is not something that the business owner wants, we then offer Wi-Fi Pro. Wi-Fi Pro will have, you'll have a public Wi-Fi solution for a sick, you know, your office awaiting area. Have people be able to um go on your Wi-Fi and manage those conversations. And then you'll have your backend solution, which will be, you know, your employees that'll be able to connect to your actual network. And you'll be able to monitor what's going on with your Wi-Fi solution, Wi-Fi Pro. One other thing, sorry, am I touching something? Okay. I use my hands a lot, if you haven't noticed. So I could keep them in my pockets. I tell my kids to do that sometimes in the stores. Um because my son will throw every little car he can find into my cart and then it's a really hard thing and you're at the the line to say no to him. Um and then we also have SD. And then we also have SD-WAN. So SD-WAN is our service that, you know, we have multiple-location business. We want to stay connected to the, the network VPN, and SD-WAN is our solution to make sure that we're keeping the, the, the businesses connected and the sites connected under a, a secured network. From a voice perspective, we have, you know, a very large suite of voice solutions. We just launched CB Mobile, so that's a different, a different solution as well, and we'll get to that in a second. But we have mobility functionality with our, our voice. We have our standard voice edge. And then we go deeper into our, what we, we call our BBE, our Business Voice Edge, which is a hosted voice solution that's more robust, that can handle a multi-site location, that they could stay connected. And obviously, with a lot of our mobility, it's call forwarding and making sure you can manage your business when you're not on site. Security, we touched about it a little bit. So what we have in our bundles for small business is called Security Edge. And then for our mid-market or higher, larger businesses, we have something called DDoS mitigation, which is our service to make sure that there aren't cyber threats to your, your managed services. On the video side, so again, think about, you know, your bars and restaurants in the area. Want to have a best video solution out there. So we have X1, like Hillary was talking about for business, that also includes streaming. However, on top of that, we've launched X1 for hospitality. So we know that it's very good for the hospitality world, multiple room. So there's a separate solution for, for X1 hospitality. We talked about managed services, but there's a lot that goes into how we manage the services and what we have to offer. Make sure that you're staying, again, connected to your business and that the security and everything that you want to do at your same location is also available to you in a multi-site location. And then Remote Worker, and I had mentioned, we've advanced our solutions based on business needs. So we all know that we were in a pandemic, businesses were hit hard. And I was speaking to a business owner, and I will get to the program. He is a RISE recipient down in Eugene, and I'll, I'll talk to you about the RISE program in a second. And him and I were, were speaking, and he said, you know, we weren't, there was no warning. There was no, our businesses just shut down. We just, and I, you know, I said, I don't, I don't own a business, but same things with the schools, like, our kids were just home. And so, you know, we said, well, what could we do from a business perspective to really help businesses that are now trying to figure out, as we were, hybrid workforce? What does that look like? So we built a, a product that's called Remote Worker, and that's really for, for exactly that. If you have a hybrid work environment, we're just making it easy for you to be able to connect to your employees, provide one bill, even if they're going to be at different locations or homes. Make sure that everything comes to one secured network and that you're able to have the same type of experience if you were to all be in the office or all be at different locations, but now you're inside your home and have a hybrid environment. And then the last thing I have on the slide, and then I'm kicking myself for not adding more slides, but Tim did say two, and I did three. So I already pushed the boundary on that. So this is our CB Mobile product. So this gets into some of our price points on the CB Mobile side. This is a new product for us. But basically, I mean, if you had ten unlimited lines for your business, you're looking at twenty-four dollars a month per line for, for, for each of, for each of the lines that you have. And then you could also do by the gig, which it adds on a cost there, just to make sure that you have enough storage and is enough ability to do what you need with your, your mobile device. And then lastly, I know this is a lot, but lastly, I want to talk about our commitment to the community. Our, our RISE program, I know Rebecca might touch on that, so I, I, I'm not going to go too much in the weeds on it. But we launched RISE when we saw how hard businesses that were owned by Black, Latino, Asian-Americans, how hard, how much harder they were hit with some of the things that happened in the pandemic. We also saw the same with statistics around women-owned businesses. And so our program is to support those businesses. They could apply for our program, and we could support them through marketing efforts. We support them through, oh, I didn't even notice that was up there. Okay, it, it might be on here. And support them through Effective, which is our advertising agency that we have, as well as France. And so we're committed to, obviously, opening that up to the Estacada area. Right now, it's not for this customer of ours. It's for non-customers as well. But this will be something that we will promote heavily in the area and make sure that everyone's aware that it exists. My marketing strategy, and, and this has evolved over the years, is to make sure that we are visible the way the community wants us to be visible. We are a big company and, and, but we do have local employees. We do have local businesses. So our marketing strategy changes based on the area that we support. And what does that mean for us? Well, recently, I've decided that, you know, we could buy ad space in print all day long and promote our services. But why don't we tell a story about our customers in the area or some of the businesses in the area that we identify as they need some additional publicity, or they need, they're a great partner to the community, and we want them to tell their story. And so we have, do a brand story on those businesses, and we commit to doing a spotlight. And we do a paid content, but then we give ads back to the businesses. So now the businesses are able to promote themselves, and we're I am a big advocate for not just putting our logo on anything. I don't think it has a voice behind it and it just shows that we support it. Dollars, which is great. I'm not saying that that should be minimized, but there needs to be a voice behind that as well. So, that is our strategy. That is our commitment. We work with businesses in all areas and help them, again, tell their voice, support them with marketing, and make sure that we show up the way the community shows up. And we are part of the community, not just, I said, a logo on something. So with that, I will take some questions. I'm going to be humble and tell you that I am not a technical expert. And I don't mean to look at Joel with that, but if anyone has technical questions, I'm going to either look at Mark to some extent from, in a business development perspective, or at the answers to you. We do have a sales engineer-director who honestly should have been here today. I did not invite him. I can answer the questions for you.
All right. Any questions? Well, I think you did a great job presenting. It's kind of hard to find any questions.
Thank you. I'm sure you'll think of some, so, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, Joel has your personal number, is that right? All right. Thanks, Rick. Next up is, and our, and our last presenter, then I'll do a little wrap-up. Rebecca Brown, and she's our Senior Director for Community Investment, and she has some great things to talk about. And she does a great job with working in the communities where we serve.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm conscientious of time, so we'll try to be brief, but excited to share. You know, I think as a company, we're grateful to be able to do business in Oregon. Hopefully, we'll be doing it here in Estacada as well, but we take being a good corporate neighbor very seriously. It's been part of our DNA since our founding. As Tim mentioned, in nineteen sixty-three, we were committed to giving back and working together to help create more stronger, vibrant communities. We invest our resources in a number of ways, predominantly with a focus around advancing digital equity as we recognize the importance of connectivity and support around that connectivity to ensure that everyone has access to be able to achieve educational attainment and to participate fully in the digital world and our digital economy. How do we do this? I'll highlight a couple of key initiatives around this work, but just quickly. Overall, we give more than three million in cash and in kind support just here in our Oregon Southwest region alone to local schools and community-based organizations in our communities. As Tim mentioned, our program, Internet Ascendure, we are now celebrating almost our eleventh year of this work to help bridge the digital divide. But it does provide home internet service included with a Wi-Fi-enabled modem, no equipment rental fees, no contract, no credit, credit check to eligible households. And it also provides those households with the opportunity to purchase a new, brand-new laptop or Chromebook for under a hundred and fifty dollars. Get access to free digital skills training, and then they also have access to our Xfinity Wi-Fi hotspots outside of the home as well. In addition, during the pandemic, we, we launched a new initiative, our Lift Zone component, which essentially, we went in and created super-fast Wi-Fi connections with our open community centers. One, to ensure that kids who might not otherwise have the opportunity to conduct their distance learning at home get online and access, access the resources they need to continue to get online and do that schoolwork. In addition, we're pretty, we have a robust employee volunteerism program. It went virtual during the pandemic, but I'm excited to say we're starting to re-engage and do some in-person events again. But we are on three hundred and sixty-five days a year, planning different volunteer events within our communities, mobilizing hundreds of employees, our family members, friends and community members to give back. And whether it be sprucing up a school, planting garden beds, feeding the houseless, doing online work as well, and those virtual opportunities with mentorship, digital skills training. We are excited and our employees are passionate about serving in their communities and giving back. And if you want to advance the slide, a couple other key programs, just to highlight, Ricky touched on Comcast RISE and that Small Business Support and Program that we do. We also have the Comcast Foundation, which is based in Philadelphia, but we provide local grant dollars to organizations, especially those serving our underserved communities. And we have an employee matching gift program. So we match our employees dollar-for-dollar on their personal donations to charitable organizations that they're personally passionate about. We do that throughout the year, up to one thousand dollars per employee every year. I have to say, I think ultimately, the company, I'm proud to do this work. I have been with the company for over seventeen years, and it's just so rewarding to see how we, and like Ricky said, fully kind of learn about our communities, figure out how we can best support you. And truly, it's about that partnership, because when we work together, look at the different resources we all can bring to the table, and then figure out the best way to leverage those to support our community, and that's what we're here to do. And we look forward to being in this community with you. Any questions on that?
Oh, that was a great end to that whole presentation. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Yeah, part of that, going back one slide, the left, there was the Navy of American Youth and Family Center logo there, which I just got appointed, you know, the one on the left, the NAIA Family Center. I just got appointed my second term as a board member there. And then also, I took advantage of that matching program, and so I donated money to the organization, the company matched it. So it, it is a nice program, and a lot of employees take advantage of that. Just a couple last little things. One thing that we didn't touch on is we also have a, what we call our GovEd program, where we provide services to municipalities, city or the county. Is available, Melanie, in, in case you need some help there and some of the programs we have through, whether internet or managed network services or whatever. The other thing, too, we do some sponsorships outside of the communities that, that maybe touches you, all of you in your roles. Like, in July, is the Oregon City County Managers Association and Annual Conference in Redmond. I just okayed the premier sponsorship for that, as well as Mayor, the Oregon Mayor's Conference in Newport in August secured the title sponsorship for that. We'll be doing the same thing at the League of Oregon Cities and also the Association of Oregon Counties, but you guys don't care about that one so much. So, anyway. So, wanted to say, one, before I forget this, is thanks for the opportunity to come here tonight. This is actually the first time we've ever done this. And so I've been with the company, and like I said, this whole new build-out is new. We did something similar for Woodburn, but it was just me and it was virtual, and so I didn't have all my great colleagues here with me to kind of back me up. So, so glad we, we were able to, to come out. Where we are right now, we've provided the, the city with a, a draft proposal, and it's a, it's just a working document. Obviously, our interest in Estacada is huge. You know, we feel there's a need out here. We have a lot to bring to the community, other than just, you know, having employees that live here and are part of your community, but we have some products and services that are going to enhance the lives of your residences, your, your businesses. We have a lot to bring, and we're not just some huge corporation in Philadelphia in a big tower. You know, this is, this is Comcast right here. So, I just wanted to, again, say thank you for this ability to, to present to, to you all. Your staff has been great to work with. We'd like to continue on with those discussions. And we feel with, you know, even the addition to Eagle Creek and here and, and the surrounding areas, we have a lot to offer that, that maybe you don't have right now. It's going to give you guys, your residences and businesses, some choices. So, thank you very much.
Well, we enjoyed your presentation. I think all your people deserve a hand. They did a great job putting that out there. And I can see where the family comes into effect. You guys really know how to cue off each other, so that's really good. We appreciate everything that you brought to the table and the features that you offer, I think, would be something good for our community. So we'll definitely have that conversation.
What, do you need anything from us?
What I would like tonight is if there is, if there's full consensus of the council to have us start working on that franchise ordinance. We, you can direct staff to do that. This is kind of exploratory. We'd be working with Peter Watts, our attorney, and making sure that there is, that the, the ordinance would be drafted in, like they, like Tim said, they've presented us with a draft franchise agreement. So we could go in that direction, or if you guys want to ponder the information and write down questions, send them in to me. I could do some more research in, in that regard. Attorney Peter will be here next time. Actually, we could even put it on the agenda to talk with him about how that, that steps, the next steps would go. But I really believe it would just be putting together the, the franchise agreement and putting that in an ordinance format and bringing it to you. But there's certain things that we'd want to know. I think I would want to know some direction, like, is that okay that, that a lot of the lines would go on poles? If there's utility poles in the neighborhood? I don't know what it looks like, but I know that every place that new infrastructure goes in, it typically goes underground here. And then, I can't think of any other questions off the top of my head, but there's things like that that we want feedback from the council. So if you want to talk about it now, or if you want to chew on the information, talk about it next time. You can do that, whichever you're
They were going to go underground, if there was underground already there.
My understanding is that they were going to balance underground and overhead based on what is already present overhead. Now, I did want to speak on that, because over the last several years, the city has already been taking steps and working with PGE to take some of the overhead lines and actually put them underground. So if that's going to be the case, where we're going to be talking about some balance of what is going underground and what is going overhead, I think that when we have that final discussion, it would be really beneficial if there was a map provided where they could actually identify on the map where they're talking about having that overhead and make sure that that's in line with what our vision for the future of the city, when it comes to the overhead lines, is. Like I said, we've been already taking those steps as a city to move most of the lines from overhead to underground. And I just don't want to take a step backwards in that goal.
Okay, is the council comfortable with proceeding? For staff to go on with some information, bring it back to us, and continue this conversation?
Yeah.
Everybody's good? All right.
Okay. All right. We will, we will proceed then. And we have quite a bit of other information to talk about tonight, so I want to say thank you for coming. And if you'd like to make a HTXA, you're more than welcome, or you're more than welcome to stay, whichever you want to do. Yes, you, thank you, Tim.
All right. So, next on the list, I have Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero-zero-seven. An ordinance amending certain chapters entitled sixteen, Development of the Estacada Municipal Code. So I'll let you speak to that.
Okay. So, in your packet, let me get to the right page here. Peter Watts, our attorney, has drafted up what the code could look like, based on our discussion with him last time, for allowing a marijuana retail store in the downtown zone, but also while keeping it a hundred feet off Main and a hundred feet off of Broadway. And so, because this is entitled sixteen, it has to go, we have to do, we have to notice the community and go through this whole process that Taylor will be leading us through. So Taylor's not here tonight, because this isn't the technical part of it. We just wanted to present this to you, see if you agree with how that has been phrased by Peter. What he's done is he has taken, he's taken out the general commercial and the highway commercial and only allowed it in the downtown zone. And so, and then there's a section in, also in the code that reduces, or that states the distance of the buffer zones, like from churches and parks and preschools. That was not included in this. So I want to clarify, I think the reason he didn't include it is because if that would be taken out, if we allowed it in the downtown zone with just the, the strip, and there's a map that is at your place, at your table, that shows you the downtown zone and where it's not allowed a hundred feet from Main Street or Broadway, but how it would be throughout the rest of the zone. So if we keep the, but any buffer zones, it's going to reduce that more. If you want to put that up on the screen, then everybody can take a look at what we're looking at. So I guess the first question is, did we hear you correctly that you only want it in the downtown zone? Or do you want to add back the highway commercial? Or add back? The general commercial. The general commercial is such a small area. If you can see, can you use their mouse a little bit and point? That's a general commercial area that it would have been allowed and that is. So that's. That was taken out in this code proposal. And then the highway commercial was also taken out and is just allowed in the downtown zone. Is that? Accurate for what you were hoping for?
I guess I wasn't under the impression, we were talking about removing any of the zones that it's currently a conditional use in, but. I was also kind of hoping that we might have a greater discussion about adding it to the riverfront commercial zone that was. Created as part of our 2019 comprehensive map. And so I guess. I guess everybody kind of knows where I'm coming from. I would like to see as many of the zoning districts allow it as we find reasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable that we would allow it as a conditional use in the general commercial. Or the highway commercial, or even the outdoor. Or the riverfront, or whatever the one where the forestation is. Yeah.
I had an idea for the council here. I know we've gone back and forth a lot about this a lot. And it's, we can. Continue to nitpick back and forth on this one. We've got something that was written. That we could move forward with and see how it works. And if it's not working, we can make adjustments to it. But we're going to go back and forth, talking about this over and over and over again, removing things, adding things, type of ideas, but let's put into play what he's written. It opens up downtown areas we've talked about. Yes, it does remove these, but we find that to be a hindrance. Then we can always make an amendment to it later. But for now, we can move forward with getting the spot open and see what that does. And if, like I said, if it causes a problem. Then we can come back and amend it a few months down the road or something. Or six months or whatever, we just give it some time to work, but. We're going to keep nickpicking us. It's going to come back up every, every few months over and over again. And we're, we're going to move forward on it. I'd just like to see it taken care of, at least move forward a little bit.
So this is actually the first time we've seen any proposed amendments to our current municipal code. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this before we put it to a formal vote. Thank you. Also, absolutely nothing would change about our current marijuana ordinances by passing what is in front of us because of the fact that there have been no proposed changes. To sixteen point six two, or I'm sorry, six five marijuana retailing, the actual marijuana municipal code in our code. That being said, I think that we should talk about the buffers, because if we're talking about removing the highway commercial. And the general commercial and just going with what's on this map, that means that we are removing absolutely every buffer except for 1,000 feet within, from a school. Is that what we agree on as a council? I'm cool with it.
I just want to be clear that we need to stick within whatever state buffers are there currently, right? That's non-negotiable. So we're not going to get things any closer than we would. We would be allowed to do. So that, that part's there, but I guess by default. Some of the city buffers that we'd placed in a few years back would be. Broad, certainly scaled back, but not to the point where they would impede on the state buffers that are in place now.
I just wanted to say that there has been, and I don't look at Justin, but I can't see, I can't see him anyway. There has been a lot of work, a lot of information gathered, and I have seen this council. Really work on getting to some compromises, because there's very different opinions. On how, you know, what the community wants and how you personally believe about this. And if, it seems like there's been some really good compromises to come together, and I think we're almost there. And so I would really like to get. To narrow, like Joel said, to narrow it down and get it moving forward. But Katie, when I was talking today, brought, pointed out that we didn't have anything in there to remove those buffer zones. So that would be, I think. Peter was focusing, because we'd focused him on how, how can we allow it in the downtown zone? Without, you know, to make that feasible. And that's how he came up with the 100 feet from, not within 100 feet from Main or Broadway. But then I didn't, I didn't say, hey, how would you change this? But I think it would, what I would like to ask is you want to reduce all the buffers except for the 1,000 feet from the school and what the state requires. Which is where I thought we were going to is reducing those to, because if, if you. Look at the map, you can see how the school zone cuts into the downtown zone a little bit. But if we, if we leave like the church or the park in there. Unless we exclude it from the downtown zone and just keep it in the other zones, but then it starts getting messy. So I don't know if Joel has a suggestion on how to keep those. But I just, I'm going to start talking in circles. So I think if you guys can come to a good, good consensus. Hopefully, we really only need four and we might not agree on this. We might end up with four, three. And I think that in a situation like this may be okay. Although I like to have us all work it out better. But anyway, back to you and.
Katie, you were first then Joel.
I just wanted to add while we're already talking about the sixteen sixty five code that's in our municipal code for marijuana retailing. Under section K subsection three of that code. You see, yeah, the issuance of a business license does not constitute a permit to engage in any activity prohibited by law or as waiver of any other regulatory or. License requirement imposed by the city or by any federal, state or local law. I would really like it if Peter can give us. Some direction on that particular line of code because of the fact that the. League of Oregon Cities, Local Government Regulation of Marijuana in Oregon Sixth Edition advises that we actually remove such language that refers to the federal code. Considering the fact that it is still currently a federally illegal practice. So I would like to have Peter specifically talk about that line of our code as it's presented already. When we have that discussion with him June thirteenth.
Thank you for putting that out. You do very good research.
Charity, anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I'm fine moving forward with how it's proposed.
Justin, you up on the screen?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good. And just to, just to verify too, we are going to try limiting it to one to start with. So once one comes in, is that kind of going to be a, a limit that we impose in a way, you know, same, same thing with like a liquor store?
Okay, thank you. Jerry, did you want to weigh in on it?
Well, my, I guess my thing goes back to what we discussed last time about. I thought we were going to eliminate the, on the thousand feet from the following, we were going to eliminate the church. Portion of it, we were in, then we were going to reduce. Everything else, so. I mean, that's just going off of my memory, that's what we were going to, we were going to take the church out of it and just leave the schools. And I think we're going to take the churches and parks out of it. No?
We'd have to take parks out of it because the bike plaza is, is right out here. And so if we did a thousand feet, we wouldn't be able to have anything downtown.
All right. So what was we discussed before was to remove the churches, put the hundred feet in from downtown. And in the downtown zone, put an exception to parks. But ma- maintain the parks distance for the rest of the city. And that's why we built out the downtown area. It would eliminate this highway commercial, which. You, Councilor Densler, had made a good argument that they, that it's too expensive to do it anywhere. So it wasn't a big impact. And it would cover not putting it in residential's and concerned areas. There are a few of them on your general commercial. But secondly, Lantin, like pretty close to residential areas, which would, it would nix those out too, which he had said. I think it was his plan, was Peter's plan. So that would open up a spot downtown. For them to trade. And that's what I was proposing that we tried to move forward with. Is opening up these spots that we've identified downtown, which is off Broadway. We make an exception to the parks in the downtown zone. And then see how that works. If that doesn't work, where they're having trouble finding spots or something like that. Then they can bring it back to the council, give them a few months, people to come through, make, make their proposals and things and apply for the license. And then if that's the problem, then we address it then. If it doesn't, then we've solved the problem and we're not. Bringing it back up every month of us.
A question I had, we'd count, kind of building off a Counselor Gates question about limiting it to one, or I think within the document, it says to the number of O L C C. Liquor stores, how is that determined? Because what if we get two? What if, what if we get two liquor stores or three liquor stores? You know, does that mean now we're allowed to have, does that, you know, expand the amount of retail shops we could have for marijuana as well too?
Yes, that would, that according to how this is written, if we ended up with two liquor stores or three liquor stores, then it would allow two or three. Marijuana retail stores as well. And I'm not sure, didn't get that answer on how. How the liquor licenses are determined for, like for the O L C C liquor store.
And then, and then if we tie it to the liquor stores as well too, I know there's talk about allowing grocery stores to serve. Or to sell liquor. And then we don't have a liquor store. What does that do to our, our thing? So it seems it'd be good, maybe. I don't know, talk, get some clarification on that. Are we tying ourselves into something that we wouldn't? We wouldn't want to. We'd be digging a hole as opposed to anything else. But otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with how it's written too. I, I agree that the general commercial. Areas, as we continue to build Estacada. They just don't seem feasible as a place to do it. There'd be more, it seems like there'd be more residential in those areas. I like the idea of the riverside, but if we are looking at one. I do like the idea of targeting kind of the downtown areas we've, if we've out, as we've outlined in this, or as Peter's proposed in this as well too. We start with that and we see where it goes from there.
As far as the O L C C, we, we can stick it to that. The other flip side to consider would be based on population. It's one per so much population or something. We can define that. It might be a good place to start with the O L C C one, and then we can weigh out what that's going to look like for a longer term. I don't see any. Liquor stores opening in the next few months. And then we can weigh that out as a council. And see if that's, if we wanted to go with the population piece on there, and we can maybe get some statistics and things to come back to us on that one. But I think the O L C C is a good, good zone to start with. So I, my big thing is just trying to get us something to start with here. And then we can customize this to what, if it's working. If one comes in and it's working, then we don't need to bring this back up again for, until it becomes a problem.
Couple of things. If we're going to restrict it to only downtown. Then we wouldn't need an exception for the buffer within a park area. For the downtown zone, because that's the only zone we're allowing it in. So. Feel like it's, we got to do one or the other. Here's what I'm going to say. There have been, there are so many voices when it comes to this issue. And. I realize that there are some voices of opposition as well. And I think that we, as a city council. As a city in general, can take steps to help meet their needs and their concerns by doing some updates to our sign code. Or advertising requirements for this industry. We can also add things into our nuisance code to help meet the needs of that demographic and help, help address some of their concerns. That being said though, we also have an entire other group of people who have voiced favor, support in this industry. And I think that we as a city owe it to them to also meet their needs. Something that I wanted to share with everybody at this table was. An executive order that was issued in July of 2021 on promoting competition in the American economy. And I'm not going to read the entire. Executive order, because it's a very long document, but I wanted to share some certain excerpts. That I'm hoping that you'll take into consideration when we do make our final vote. I don't think that it would be healthy for the city of Estacada to limit ourselves to one and only one. And I'm going to share with you why. A fair, open and competitive marketplace has long been a cornerstone of the American economy. While excessive market concentration threatens basic economic liberties, democratic accountability. And the welfare of workers, farmers, small businesses, startups and consumers. The American promise of a broad and sustained prosperity depends on an open and competitive economy. For workers, a competitive marketplace creates more high quality jobs and the economic freedom to switch jobs or negotiate a higher wage. For small businesses and farmers, it creates more choices among suppliers and major buyers, leading to more take home income, which they can reinvest in their enterprises. For entrepreneurs, it provides more space to experiment, innovate and pursue the new ideas. That have for centuries powered the American economy and improved our quality of life. And for consumers, it means more choices, better service and lower prices. Robust competition is critical to preserving America's role as the, as the world's leading economy. Not all of these sections are going to pertain necessarily to the retail industry or to the agricultural industry of which this industry we're talking about today is a very unique combination of both. But I wanted to share this last paragraph. You can take the time to read through the executive order later, but. This order recognizes that a whole of government approach is necessary to address over concentration. Monopolization and unfair competition in the American economy. Agencies can and should further the policies set forth in section one of this order. By, among other things, adopting pro-competitive regulations and approaches to procurement and spending. And by rescinding regulations that create unnecessary barriers to entry that stifle competition. And understand that we don't want to open the floodgates. I don't want to open the floodgates either, but I am also really quite terrified that this seven person committee. Could get it wrong. If we say, if we pick one, and what if we get it wrong? In a fair market economy and capitalism, if, if we didn't like this business, you don't go to that business and they go under and someone else who can meet the needs of the community will come in behind them. But when you have a monopoly and no other choices, or your closest choice is 20 miles away and with the gas prices doing what they're doing. People are just going to go and spend the money. And even if we pick the wrong person to, to run our only dispensary. If we get it wrong, there's really not a lot of consequences. That being said, I think that we would be doing the people of Estacada a better service as their government by not limiting it to just one. If we limit it to two or three, the idea that the compromise that I had in my head was. What if we didn't take away the ability of opening up a dispensary in all of our zones except downtown? What if we allowed it in certain zones that we thought would be okay? And then that way, if someone wanted to come in and create competition, because man, they've got one dispensary in Estacada and I don't like going there. And I've got my friend over here who could run a dispensary so much better. And put the other people under. Well, heck, let's welcome that business who wants to provide a better service, better quality product, better prices. Whatever you have it. And I don't think that we should be so limiting for the people who live here, for the people who do support this industry. And maybe we cap it at three. So you can have one per zoning district with a max of three in the entire city. But I don't want to see us limited to just one. This is not a liquor store. This is not run the same way. It's not regulated the same. And I think that it would be better if we talked about not being so restrictive to one only. Thank you.
That said, we're done with questions back and forth. We're going to move it along. So Melanie, what are you looking for right?
Okay, so what I'm looking for is number one, to say thank you, because it's kind of, it's a, it's a, it's hard to weigh things out, in my opinion. And. We're, not everybody's in agreement. And I think you guys have done a really great job of looking at all the sides of. Like, we don't know, like it's, it's new territory, you know, and how is this all going to play out? What's going to be best for the community? So thank you for the discussion. What, and Peter will be coming next time to discuss with you how the application process might go. What that application would look like. I believe he's attempting to bring someone with him from the O L C C. And so we'll have even, you know, I should have the right people in the room, but I'd like to narrow down. Do we, it sounds like in spite of good arguments and different, I, it sounds like we want to have it only in the downtown zone. Or do we want to add back in? So only in the downtown zone is that consensus? We need to do like a hand.
Can we do a vote like?
Yeah.
Have a city do a roll call.
Okay, okay. So the, the option, so the first question would be, we either have it only in the downtown zone to start. If we want to, and then if that's not, and then I'll go, who wants to add it to highway commercial? And who wants, no, because I have, who wants to, I can't do that. I have to do. And who wants, no, because I have, who wants to, I can't do that. I have to do like both zones. Who wants to add it to, back to highway commercial and Riverside? And we'll see, I think. Who is like, can we do a roll call? Who would prefer only in the downtown zone to start out? Is that a clear question? That's what we are aiming at with this code.
Are we, are we doing quantity as well or just the down?
No, I think just the zone. Let's just do the zone first.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Yes.
Only in the downtown zone.
Only in the downtown. Counselor Dunsborough.
No.
Counselor Gates.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Lidkey.
Yes.
Counselor Strobel.
Yes.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Uh, no.
Mayor Drinkwong.
Yes.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you everybody for expressing your opinion. So we will do, right now we will continue to work with Peter on having it only in the downtown zone, 100 feet from Main Street and Broadway as it shows on your map. And then that would require us to reduce all the buffers because we're not having it in other zones. If we're going to add it later on down the road to add it to other zones, then we, you might want to consider buffer zones. But I think I'll ask Peter to take that out of the code at this point because it would be irrelevant. Is, am I reading that right? That we don't need the buffer except for what the state requires with the schools. Okay. Okay, question, you want to do questions more?
Yeah, I've got two here. Katie first and then Joel.
I have one request before we meet next. I don't know if it's possible, but I would really like to have the DEIC's opinion on the very last line that is proposed as an amendment in attachment number one, letter M, at the very end. The cannabinoid retail business shall be selected after a competitive process if the mayor and city council determine and make findings that the benefits associated with the business exceed the potential harm that it could cause. I find that that potential, that last statement can be potentially derogatory toward the people that use cannabis as either a form of medicine or recreation. And I would really like to get the DEIC's perspective on that particular verbiage because I think that we're, we're being pretty derogatory toward a group of people here. Or at least by adding the, the words potential and perceived harm would make it, would make it a little bit better of a statement for me.
I could see if we have, if we can get that to the DEIC before then. But I don't know if they'll be, they don't have a meeting. They were meeting today, but they didn't have a quorum. So I don't know if they have any other scheduled. It's not likely they'll be meeting, but if, if it is, I can get it through, pass them. And I, I think I, when I ask Peter also to add the word perceived, I don't think it would weaken his, the purpose that that is in there is to provide an application that have clear and objective standards for scoring and that, I don't think that would weaken that, just change it to that. So unless anybody else had a comment on that, but I'm fine with that.
Uh, no, I withdraw my question.
Okay, so we've decided only in the downtown zone, which will also reduce all the buffers because it's only going to be in the downtown zone with the, with the Main Street and Broadway, 100 feet from them. And then the question of the number of stores. I'm not sure why we, we chose the OLCC, maybe because it's more cut and dry. You can look and say, hey, we have one liquor store versus what's our population right now and when is it going to be different? But if it does go to, you know, the, where a grocery store can sell liquor, is that going to be a, I don't know if that's coming up soon. I don't know. It could be. So the, I can check with Peter on that and how he feels that's the most clear cut for the code. But the question to you would be, do you want to stick with one to start with? One or the number of liquor stores that we have? And then if not, so it'd be yes, I do want to stick with one or no, if we want to try to look at more. So I think we need to do a vote again.
Okay.
All right. Is that all right?
Now, again, sorry, real quick, Melanie, just to, you, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, so just to say, if we stuck with one right now, it's not to say that we can't change it later on and make more, right?
That is correct.
Okay, that's.
It's just very difficult to start with two or three and then come back to one. Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. And Katie has a question.
I just want to throw out, Counselor Gates, it's taken 15 months for us to have this discussion and make any change. I, I wouldn't hold my breath to change something later. I'd like to get the code right the first time.
Okay.
All right. Is there, all right. So the question is to allow one or the same number of liquor stores as it is written in the code right now. Would you like to do that?
Counselor Dunsborough.
No.
Counselor Gates.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Lidkey.
Yes.
Counselor Strobel.
Yes.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Yes.
Mayor Drinkwong.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Sadie. Okay, so we will have, we will work towards only the downtown zone, which reduces all the buffer or removes all the buffer zones except for what's required by the state. And then we will maintain, we'll maintain that it is written in the code, there's one or the same number of liquor stores unless Peter recommends to change that based on what's coming down the pipeline. Okay, I think that answers all my questions. And I'll also, Katie, look at that. If I can get it to the DEIC or even just run it past Peter. Because we certainly don't want to be, I don't think we're looking to be offensive to people and choose sides. But there's definitely strong opinions on what, you know, what's best for the community. And so I'll try to make it as neutral as possible. Okay, and that is all the questions, I believe, that I had on that. Thank you for a very productive discussion and for expressing your opinions. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we are now at resolution 2022 dash 007. A resolution setting sewer rates, reduce sewer rates, unusual strength discharge rates and delinquent sewer charges. So.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, just to speak briefly to this. Included in the packet is a resolution that would increase the sewer rate by $5 a month. And there's also a comparison of sewer rates of other municipalities or other sewer districts, wastewater districts in Clackamas County, showing where Estacada falls, which is that we do have very low sewer rates. And DEQ was recommending strongly that we needed to significantly increase those, which we will push back on. But with this new sewer plant being, going to be developed, we are going to need to come up to where a lot of the other, you know, the averages are better. So we thought, so instead of waiting too long and then having this, a large jump, which can be very difficult for communities to, you know, people in the community to budget for. We'll start with, we'll raise it $5. This is to propose to raise it $5 a month right now. And then we'll see, you know, at a later date when we have to, how many times we have to continue to raise it. Uh, we're not raising water or storm, stormwater at all. This is just for the sewer and it's just a base rate. It's not going to be based on like how much usage, like the water is how much usage. This is just a base rate for the sewer. Uh, we are also redefining how community members can apply for a senior discount. And after running the numbers, it doesn't make a huge difference at this point as far as who can qualify. But we, but we will see how this change works and then potentially also expand it to other, maybe not just seniors, maybe other groups who might be struggling that we could assist. So if there's any questions, I will try to answer those. But that's the basic premise with this resolution.
Okay, you've heard the explanation of the resolution.
Question.
Yeah.
You said redefining.
Yeah.
How, how people can get the reduced rates? Is that redefining as in constricting or expanding? Can you touch on that?
It is, the intent is to expand it. Right now, the, it is limited to two times the federal poverty level. And we have changed that to be 60% of the Oregon median income, which actually, when I went back and looked at it, it's pretty close to the same. But it's, that's pretty low income actually. And so we will, we're, we are redefining that and then we'll work on whether it needs to be, if we can increase the, the income level, or if we can increase it to like what people groups it would be available to. So it's a slight change, but hopefully will help some.
I think you're being very responsible in this. Hitting it this way versus, I mean, I'm just going to give an example of our sister city, Sandy, they, they had rate shock when they built their sewer plant. And I don't know if you guys saw how much they went up, but it was astronomical. And I'm glad you're hitting this in a way that it's gradual with the need versus just imposing something like that on the peoples. Appreciate that. Jerry?
Okay, so I just want to clarify for everybody sitting in the audience and then, and everybody joining us on Zoom that aren't looking in the, the packet. We're, we're raising from, right now we're the lowest rate in Clackamas County for a city at $40.25. So even with this race, which is a $4.75 raise in price, we're still going to be the second lowest. We're still going to have the second lowest rate in Clackamas County at $45 a month. So this isn't a giant rate hike. It's not a, you know, it's not anything that's, you know, going to make a huge impact. It's just a, you know, we're still going to be the second lowest, have the second lowest rate in Clackamas County. So just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody that's wa, everybody watching, not looking in a packet and everybody sitting.
Thank you, Jerry. My quick question had to do with number two, the reduced rate. We had talked a little bit during our Friday briefing about maybe considering people with disabilities and, or on disability and disabled veterans or something like that in there as well. Is that kind of what you're planning, expanding that out in the verbiage there as well?
That, that would be, I haven't made that decision yet about how to expand that. But those would be, I think, some really good suggestions. There might be other suggestions also, like just lowering the age group that could receive that or just, I mean, ideally it would be anybody who meets that income bracket could, could qualify for this. But we might, like you said, do people who are on disability or that would be a good first step or especially disabled veterans or that we could kind of work that down. I just haven't drilled down into that enough yet to be able to figure out how to expand that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Justin, do you have anything? No? Okay.
Sorry, my screen shrunk there, so I couldn't find the undo button. No, I do not.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion on the floor?
I move to adopt resolution 2022 007, a resolution setting sewer rates, reduce sewer rates, unusual strength discharge rates and delinquent sewer charges.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next on my list, I have the second consideration for ordinance 2022 dash 003 and ordinance amending title to administration personnel of Estacada municipal code.
All right. That's just the second hearing of the code that was changing the part about committees and commissions and boards. So this is the second consideration of that.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
I move to approve ordinance 2022 dash 03 and ordinance amending title to administration and personnel of the Estacada municipal code.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are at the next citizen and community group comment. And I have Bill Highlands to speak, and you have three minutes.
I hope not to take that long. Competition is good, but two dispensaries could lose money whereas one dispensary could be successful at first. I would suggest maybe, you know, every million dollars you would add a dispensary automatically, you wouldn't have to consider it as a council. And you certainly don't want to grab too large a monopoly, but you also don't want to have two failures to start. So I think some sort of more intelligent choice of how you limit the number would be a good idea because otherwise you're going to micromanage as you go.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. All right, I don't have any more forms in front of me. And there's nobody in the audience which speak, no? Okay. We are now with the mayor council reports and comments. So I will start off with Justin.
I don't really have much tonight. I appreciate everybody, uh, everybody chiming in from Comcast and stuff. I appreciate everybody on the council and some good discussion tonight. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Justin. Jerry?
As I always do, I just want to thank staff. I, I said it earlier today during the NADA meeting that we had, when we didn't have a quorum. I really appreciate just the, you know, how the, the effort that the, that the city staff puts in. And I think that, you know, we, we've all been, we, we were all worried that we were going to see, you know, we, we were going to be missing something, you know, between losing, losing Matt and losing, you know, and then Denise retiring. But I for one, haven't seen a decline in the, in the amount of work, the amount of effort, the amount of information that we get from staff. And I really appreciate that, you know, from, from our standpoint and even, you know, even from just a citizen standpoint, I really do appreciate and how welcome or how welcomed they have made the newest employee, Elena. She can say nothing but good about the, our city staff. I had a good conversation with her today. I think she was an amazing hire and I, I think that she's going to do a lot of good here in Estacada. And, you know, I guess that I just really appreciate you guys for what you do. And, and thank you all for coming. You know, it's, these, uh, these meetings aren't the most entertaining. We do tend to, we, we do tend to have some entertainment value and up here, but I really appreciate you guys coming and everybody joining on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I just want to say that I always appreciate staff and thank you for facilitating tonight's meeting. I think you did a really good job, Melanie. Yeah, no, it was, it's always a hard conversation. That's, you know, we've been having this conversation for 15 months and today was really productive. And I wanted to just thank you for helping keep that conversation going well. And I just want to say I look forward to talking about Comcast in the future. I'm not putting all my eggs in one basket, but I'm excited about future conversations for sure.
A couple of weeks ago, we talked about the new library event coming out and we had such a great turnout for that. People coming out to check that out. Right next door was Art in the Park, which was awesome as well too. Downtown, we had farmer's market opening up and we had Back to the Clack and Event Upriver as well. We had such a great turnout in downtown Estacada that day. I was driving through and it was packed downtown and I love it. Definitely since that summer's coming on, definitely since the rivers opened back up and just want to continue to welcome people back to Estacada.
Good job. Joel?
Thanks you guys for coming. It was definitely a great presentation from Comcast. Looking forward to speaking to them more. I wanted to again point out by our second consideration and voting that in, what was actually formed during that. It was the public, that's like the traffic and public safety committee was passed for a second time. So now it's established at this point. And I just wanted to again read what that is, so people understand what that is, because it was kind of combined into all that. There is created a traffic and public safety committee, which is an advisory board and whose duties and responsibilities shall be as follows. To advise the city council in the creation, development and implementation of official traffic and public safety activities. Develop and recommend coordinated traffic, safety and public safety programs. Recommend traffic, safety and public safety priorities for the city. Provide research and information to the city on matters related to traffic and public safety. Promote public acceptance of the city traffic and public safety programs. Foster public knowledge and support of traffic, law enforcement, sorry, traffic law enforcement, public safety and traffic engineering problems and needs. And then perform other duties as assigned by the council. So we'll be looking for membership in that. I think that's going to be opening up pretty soon. And so if you're interested in that committee, And so if you're interested in that committee, uh, pay attention, keep an eye out for it, and then apply for it. And I thank you, staff, and thank you, uh, council.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, guys, everybody coming out tonight, and um I know Comcast already left, but I appreciate their wonderful presentation tonight and. Um, Melanie, thank you for. I'm glad we were able to talk on Friday and you were able to answer some questions and we had a good conversation, and I think that just helps. Facilitate these meetings. I love that you do that with every counselor and that we can just kind of flow through, and that way we're not getting hung up with. Too many things. I, I really, really appreciate it. Um, a couple of things, I had the privilege to stop by the Farmer's Market this weekend. That was really cool. Um, if you haven't had an opportunity, um, the weather was beautiful, so it was, it was great. Um, please stop by, check it out. Also, just a quick, since I don't have anything really new to report on the school district. But I do want to give um some, I want to promote the varsity girl softball team, and they are, have the playoffs this Wednesday. At the um, over on the turf field at River Mill, so uh Wednesday afternoon, I believe it's at five, don't quote me on the time. But it will be Wednesday afternoon playoffs, uh softball is killing it this year. So um go check them out, support your school district and your athletes, and that's all I got. Thanks, everyone.
Nice, nice. Um, I got a two-fold thing here. I, I want to thank staff for their excellent um information. Everybody's getting the information now. There's Friday reports coming out of Melanie. I walk into the office, people are smiling. It's a place I want to go into. That's exactly what I was hoping would happen when all these changes were made. I think you guys are doing wonderful things. You're making it easier for us to understand when we come to this table. The, I want to also thank uh the council. I mean, you guys are talking. We're not arguing, we're talking. I think that's the key here, is that we all represent our city in a way that says, hey, we care. All right, so I want to thank all of you up here, and I want to thank all of you out there for coming in and, and sitting through this. I mean, I know it's not as exciting sometimes. But uh the end result is worth every bit of it, so thank you for coming. Uh, in that, we are adjourned.